Good evening and welcome to the New York City Hybrid Hearing on a Committee on Civil Service and Labor. At no time, please do not approach the dears, and we ask that you kindly silent all electronic devices. If you have any questions, please raise your hand and one of us, the Sergeant of Arms, will kindly assist you. Thank you so much for your kind cooperation. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Good afternoon. I am Councilmember Carmen Delarosa, Chair of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor. Thank you for joining today's hearing on DCAST's professional development training programs. DCAST Citywide Learning and Development is a central resource for citywide training and development for New York City employees. DCAST offers a wide range of courses taught by a mix of government, university, and private sector experts, and spans six portfolio areas: executive development, management and supervision, no-cost learning, New York City-specific, personal development, and technology. Training and educational opportunities are essential to advancing in the workplace. In response to Local Law 18 of 2019, which seeks to find and eliminate instances of pay disparity within the city workforce, the City Council found deep occupational segregation across city ranks. This means that there are titles and job categories that are predominantly held by women, such as Assistant Principal or Secretary, and title largely held by people of color, such as Emergency Services Aid or Central Services Technician. These jobs tend to be paid less than those titles predominantly held by men and white employees, such as Battalion Chiefs or City Laborer. This is why it is vital that women and people of color have access to training tools to help them gain new skills, overcome career roadblocks, and ascend to leadership roles. Training and educational opportunities encourage employees to continue growing and learning in order to become more efficient civil servants. Research shows that employees who are given opportunity to engage in personal development tend to have greater job satisfaction, higher productivity levels, and will stay in their position longer than those who do not. Job satisfaction and retention of existing municipal workforce is vital, given the state of the shrinking civil city workforce. On October 1st of this year, the city implemented a government hiring freeze that only allows agencies to hire for positions related to public health, public safety, or revenue generation. Following the hiring freeze, the city eliminated 2,100 vacant city positions in an effort to cut spending across agencies. The committee will question how the current hiring freeze and the budget cuts will impact agencies' outlook and ability to pay for trainings. The decreasing city workforce underscores the importance of using professional development as a tool to encourage growth and satisfaction among existing staff. New York City municipal employees are charged with delivering essential services to New Yorkers. Proper training and education are critical for effective implementation and public service delivery. The committee looks forward to learning how the City Council can work with the administration to expand training programs, to sharpen employee skills, and to strengthen the agency's retention across the city's workforce. I'd like to thank the committee staff for the preparation of this hearing. Senior Policy Analyst Elizabeth Arts, Legislative Council Ria Osawara. I'd also like to thank my staff, James Burke, Kiana Diaz, and Freinet Familia. With that, I now invite representatives from the administration, Katrina Porter and Regent Dara Persaud, to come forward and begin their testimony as soon as the committee staff has administered the oath. I would like to know that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted on the record for up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Testimony must be relevant to the topic of this hearing and adhere to two-minute clock. Thank you, and I also want to recognize we've been joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Joseph, Councilmember Botcher, Councilmember Nurse, and Councilmember Moya is on Zoom. Thank you.
We will now hear testimony from the administration. Before we begin, I will administer the affirmation. Panelists, please raise your right hand. I will read the affirmation once and then call on you, each of you individually, to respond. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to councilmember questions?
I do.
Thank you so much. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Delarosa and members of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor. My name is Katrina Porter, and I am the Chief Human Capital Officer and Deputy Commissioner for Human Capital at the Department of Citywide Administrative Services. I am joined today by my colleague, Regendra Prasad, Executive Director of Training and Business Services. DCAST's mission is to make city government work for all New Yorkers. Our commitment to equity, effectiveness, and sustainability guides our work, guides our work providing city employees with the resources and support needed to succeed, including recruiting, hiring, and training. At DCAST, we think of our training and development as part of what makes New York City government an attractive employer. The skills building we provide contributes to employee retention and helps attract top-quality talent to join city government. I am happy to discuss these training and development offerings, and thank you for the opportunity to expound on them. The DCAST Bureau of Citywide Learning and Development is the primary educational bureau of the City of New York and offers relevant professional development mandated and non-mandated training to all employees. The Bureau housed within the Human Capital Division also manages citywide organizational, executive development, and internship programs. Chapter 35, Section 814 of the City Charter requires DCAST to administer citywide training and development programs. Simultaneously, the City Charter, Section 815, grants agency heads the power to conduct training and development programs to improve the skills, performance, and career opportunities of their agency's employees. While learning and development, excuse me, the Citywide Training Center meets our Training and Development Charter mandate and addresses the need of agencies and their staff. The Training Center supports in-person and virtual trainings for city employees. During fiscal year 2023, DCAST trainings were administered to more than 490,000 city employees. A significant portion of this number was due to employees taking multiple mandated compliance trainings. The DCAST Citywide Training Center course catalog helps city employees of all skill levels find professional development and training opportunities. This catalog is published three times a year, once in January, June, and September. The catalog contains descriptions of courses and schedules of workshops and educational programs that are offered. To help employees select courses and programs that best meet their personal and professional development needs, the Training Course Catalog is organized into six portfolios. These include executive development, management and supervision, professional development, technology, New York City-specific trainings, which cover topics relevant to working in city government, and our no-cost learning portfolio, which provides agencies with ways to train their workforce for free. DCAST offers open enrollment courses, which includes, which include participants from multiple city agencies. In addition, to help agencies meet their unique training needs, the Citywide Training Center schedules catalog courses as agency-specific offerings upon request. For topics of interest to an agency, whether in the catalog or not, courses and customized workshops may be developed and conducted exclusively for a group of an agency's employees. These classes can be offered at the Citywide Training Center or at an agency's facility. At DCAST, training courses are led by highly qualified consultants from government, academia, and private sector. DCAST's in-house subject matter experts also provide select learning content. All trainers bring a wealth of knowledge and expertise to classes and are well-equipped to address city-specific issues and challenges. We consistently receive positively, positive feedback about our classes. The average rating for professional development training based on post-session surveys has consistently averaged over 90% out of 100%. We are proud to say that the training, that the Citywide Training Center has received accreditation from major outstanding organizations in the workplace education field. The agency is an authorized provider of continuing education units, professional development credits, and continuing legal education credits from various accreditation associations. This includes recognition from the Society for Human Resources Management as a recertification provider and as a provider of professional development credits for human resources professionals. In February 2001, the Citywide Training Center was reaccredited by the International Accreditors for Continuing Education and Training as an approved provider of training services. This reaccreditation was the result of a thorough, comprehensive, and rigorous evaluation of our core learning and development offerings. City employees use the continuing education units to signify successful completion of non-credit programs and courses intended to improve their knowledge and skills and to maintain licensure and certifications. DCAST charges agencies for most training classes in which their employees are enrolled using a fee-for-services payment model. Participating agencies receive invoices once a month if staff participated in training classes. Mayoral, mayoral agencies pay for training through inter-agency budget modifications, and non-mayoral, mayoral agencies pay by agency check. Each agency is responsible for ensuring the payment is made to DCAST for training. The DCAST Bureau of Citywide Learning and Development operates a learning management system which supports training and serves as a centralized database for current and historical citywide training records. The learning and management system also hosts and tracks progress and completions for citywide learning, where training may be taken by a participant on their own schedule via computer. City-specific courses, including all mandated trainings offered at the Citywide Training Center, are also hosted on the learning management system. DCAST is excited to announce that a new learning and management system is in the final stages of development. This new system will provide an integrated platform for training operations, hosting data, management, and reporting. The rollout of the new learning and management system includes agency onboarding, education, and implementation, and will take place in 2024. The new learning and management system will also offer direct training services to agencies and employees, provide employees with access to online catalog of open enrollment trainings and e-learning, enable employees to register for classes and download transcripts, and allow agencies to manage training and run training reports for their agency's workforce. These are many benefits, these are many benefits of the new learning and management system, including the capability to reach a high volume of participants with training opportunities. It will automate and streamline several of our current paper-intensive processes. Employees will be able to access the online system anywhere, at any time. We are also excited about the possibility of adding data analytics and visualization, artificial intelligence, process reengineering and improvement, and more cultural awareness and sensitivity courses as we regularly assess our offerings and make sure they align with the training needs of city employees and emerging trends. As you have heard, the depth and breadth of the training provided by DCAST to city employees is wide and comprehensive. Whether physical at the Training Center through webinars or via sessions giving live in their own agencies, city employees can become constant learners. The skills and knowledge we offer are important to the city's workforce and agency leaders because employees know that wherever they go within city government or outside of it, our training will help bolster their work performance and career. We are very proud of the work that we do at DCAST, and I hope this overview has provided you with an understanding of the city's training and development framework, including where we are today and our vision for making city employees the best that they can be. Thank you again to the committee and the council for this opportunity to speak today and for your partnership in valuing training and development for city employees. I would be happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
Thank you so much for your detailed testimony. You answered some of my questions already, but I want to start first with just basics. So who is eligible to enroll in DCAST training courses? And does an employee need a supervisor's permission to enroll in a course?
Thank you for that. So all city employees are eligible to take our training courses. That includes elected officials, city council members, so anyone is eligible to take our trainings. Employees are required to obtain their supervisor's approval, especially since there is a fiscal impact to them taking the classes. You know supervisors also may take into consideration the operational impact of them attending training classes. So it's important to have that buy-in.
Great, and understanding the fiscal constraints, but if an employee does want to enroll on a course and their supervisor does not agree, is there any recourse that's available to that employee?
So currently, there is no official process or appeal process for employees to follow. However, we do work very closely with each agency's training liaison to address, you know, any issues that may, that are brought to our attention by employees.
Okay. Thank you. How are instructors selected? Like what credentials or certifications are required to become an instructor? I was happy to hear that that DCAST is considered an accredited institution for training, but how do you select your instructors?
Thank you for that. So our consulting partners are selected through a competitive process. DCAST issues a request for proposal, and then we review those proposals with subject matter experts within DCAST and across the city to identify, you know, the best, the best candidate to provide trainings. We take into consideration the cost scaling of the trainings and, you know, any specialized skill set they may have for the RFP that we are releasing. I do want to hand it over to my colleague Raj, who can give more information about the process.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, so the, the instructors, as Katrina said, are selected through a competitive RFP process. And so we look at different service areas, whether it's technology, executive development, person, supervision, and so that we target specific needs of the city as we select the consultants that will deliver for us. It's very competitive. They have to pass certain requirements. Of course, this entire process is managed by the Office of Citywide Procurement. We work closely with them to make sure there are no red flags, and we check their credentials to make sure that they can deliver effectively in the service options that they are awarded contracts in.
Great. And similarly, how is the curriculum for each course developed?
So the curriculum is developed in partnership with DCAST and also based on the, the needs of our city agencies. So we, we use feedback received from our city agencies to determine, you know, the, the courses that should be included in our catalog, and we also work closely with them in developing the curricula to be offered.
I know you mentioned emerging topics like artificial intelligence, and we have a lot of topics like that that are emerging in a new workforce, as I call it. How often does DCAST generate new ideas for course curricula? And how often do course instructors update their material to adapt to new issues that arise?
So thank you for that. We consistently review what we call post-survey feedback from our training participants. So we use that information in addition to feedback that we receive from our, our city, our agency partners to determine what the agency needs, like what training needs are required of, of the agency for their employees. And then, you know, we update our course curricula three times a year when we release those, those training catalogs. So we are, you know, we remove trainings and add them, you know, every time we release a new catalog.
Great. Okay. Trainings offer valuable opportunity and encourage employees to learn new skills or change roles. How does DCAST promote their trainings to city employees?
Yes, so upon release of the, upon release of the training catalog, we send out a memo to our agency partners. So one memo would come from our, the DCAST Commissioner to agency heads. We also have training liaisons at each of the city agencies, so they would get, you know, an email to let them know that the new catalog is being released. And then the information is also posted on DCAST's website, and it's available for city employees to go and view. And actually, they can download an application to request training, so it's on our website.
And at this time, are courses taught in other language, in languages other than English?
Not at this time.
And what about employees who may be hearing impaired? Are there courses available?
Absolutely. We, we, we consider reasonable accommodations on an as-requested basis. We make best-faith efforts to accommodate employees.
Okay. What about for in-person, I know there are in-person courses. Are there remote options or less restrictive accommodations available for learning, for enrols, enrollees with disabilities?
Yes, we will definitely entertain and make, be as flexible as possible to accommodate reasonable accommodations for disabled employees. So, you know, if, you know, I believe we can, but I'm, Raj, if you can just elaborate a little bit.
It's an ongoing process and it's need-specific, right? So we'll continue to assess and work on that.
So you basically liaison with the agency liaison, and if requests for accommodation come in, it is through that person that normally those requests come?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I want to ask a few questions about costs before I pass it on to my colleagues. Aside from the free trainings, the price of enrollment typically ranges from $75 to $500, with the most expensive being $2,465. How does DCAST determine the price for each training?
So the way it works is that like the, the training cost is determined by the duration and the complexity of the training being offered. So on average, a one-day training cost is about $250. Our more specialized training courses do average between $1,000 and $2,500. So an example of a specialized training would be like Microsoft Power BI, which is a three-day course, or, you know, maybe our project management certification course is another good example of a specialized training that we offer that, that ranges. The cost of the, the training is on the higher end.
Are all the costs associated with conducting a training covered by the fee? Or does DCAST need to allocate funding to maintain the course catalog in addition?
So DCAST covers the cost to manage the Training Center, but the training fees, they go directly to cover the cost of the training through our consultants.
Okay. In the November budget plan, the mayor mandated a 5% cut across all agencies. How do you think this will impact agencies' ability to pay for DCAST trainings and overall training enrollment?
So I think it's a little early to understand the impacts the fiscal condition may have on training for city employees. However, we do have a catalog that offers free trainings, and then we're also planning to reinstitute a training expo where city employees will have the opportunity to attend free trainings for popular courses over the course of a full week. This training expo is a part of our contract with our consultants, and it's, you know, they kind of give back to city employees, so that would absolutely be an opportunity for city employees to take advantage of the trainings we offer at no fee.
Even, so even the trainings that would otherwise cost money will be free of cost at this expo?
Correct.
Oh, great. Okay. And then has DCAST noticed any correlation between the price of training course and the enrollment rate? So if the price is high, less people sign up?
So what we do see is that the more expensive trainings, the, the demand for them are less than some of our other trainings. But I do not believe that there is a correlation between that. It's just that it's based on the specialized nature of the training that attracts, you know, specific individuals.
Are fee waivers or vouchers available? If so, how does an agency determine who's eligible?
Unfortunately, there are no fee waivers for training.
All right. I'm going to pass it on to Councilmember Joseph. I also want to recognize that Councilmember Cabana is here. We'll hear from colleagues, and then I have some more questions.
Thank you.
Senator Joseph.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My question is, how does DCAST identify training needs among its workforce and develop curriculum to address skill, knowledge gap? Do you solicit from employees or managers?
So we, we review feedback received from employees that take our trainings. There's a post-survey evaluation, and we also work very closely with our agency partners and agency training liaisons to address the specific training needs of agencies. And we also, we also have agency-specific trainings where we will develop a curriculum specifically for that agency. And, you know, there, and it would be employees just from that particular agency. We can go to, to, you know, a location that is convenient for the agency, or they can come to our Citywide Training Center. So we do work very closely with agencies to develop programs and curriculums to support their individual training needs.
So how many, how many participate, employees have participated in last year in any of your trainings?
I'll turn it over to Raj.
Yes, sir. Yes. So last year, we had, not counting the, the folks that went to compliance courses, approximately 10,800, fiscal year 23, 10,800 participants in our training classes.
And how do you, how do you track rate of effectiveness measure? How do you measure that? Because you, I'm sure you have a metric. How do you measure that? And what metrics do you use? And what do these metrics show about the impact of the training?
So we do track our success rate through the man, the mayor's management report. And so for FY '23, our success rate is at about 93%. The effectiveness of the training is a little bit harder to gauge. However, we do review the post-course surveys of the participants who attended the training. We take that information very seriously. There's actually a formal process for us to review the feedback received from training participants. And, you know, if we do receive any negative feedback, we do go back to the consultants and make adjustments accordingly.
Earlier, Councilmember Delarosa talked about new initiatives. Is there any new initiatives in the next year or two related to improving, expanding, assessing effectiveness of DCAST employee training programs? And what kind of resources are you looking to implement?
So I can't think of anything right now, but it is something that we can take back and, you know, come up with a plan of action to address your question.
Well, well, technology is moving as fast, so you're keeping up with all the AI, generative AI programs that are coming up? Because I noticed you do have technology in one of your trainings. How are you supplementing it? Because not only Microsoft Office, but you're going to have to extend it.
Yes, we are looking to add a few new training courses to our catalog around data and visualization, artificial intelligence, and things of that nature. So, so we are looking to expand our technology portfolio in an upcoming catalog.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Joseph. Councilmember Nurse?
Thank you, Chair. This was just kind of a question that came to mind while I was listening. Was more about for people who are going through these, who are taking these trainings, are these people who continue to take more of the DCAST trainings? Are you seeing more of the same people take them? Or is it definitely like a constantly growing pool of participants?
So it varies, but we do see repeat learners. So we do see employees who take multiple training classes, you know, within a certain timeframe. Our new learning, learning and management system will help us to better understand that data. You know, so we'll be able to provide more information on those type of metrics in the near future.
Okay, my last question, I'm sorry if it was asked, but are there, is there one particular, you know, top agencies where you're seeing staff participate more in these classes?
Yes, and I'm going to turn it over to Raj for him to share that information with you.
Yes, so, so our top utilizers from a training perspective, you have DOHMH, DOT, ACS, CUNY uses some of our services as well. So those are among the top agencies that utilizes our services.
So not a lot from the council?
Well, it's 10,800. And we do, because they are, if you look at the number, they come from 80 agencies. That, the 10,800 come from 80 agencies. So if you think about the higher ones, which is what, those are the top ones that use it. But we do have over 80 agencies that are part of that aggregate number of 10,800.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Chair.
May I speak?
Sure.
So this is for Councilmember Joseph. I just wanted to clarify that we do have two new initiatives that we're moving forward, and that would be the new learning and management system, which will, you know, be a tremendous benefit to the city's workforce and also the training expo that's coming up in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. I have a few follow-up questions on some of the questions my colleagues asked. One of them is about the learning, learning and management system. Is the learning and management system designed to be Is the learning and management system designed to be kind of your remote academy? Is that sort of the thing that's going to be able to expand remote learning for the agency?
Absolutely. So the um new learning and management system will allow us to expand our e-learning courses, which employees will be able to take anywhere. So if they want to learn from home or at their desk, we're planning to expand our e-learning portfolio to offer more professional development trainings.
Great. Do you foresee a cost-saving or cost-reduction from going e-learning model?
Potentially, um but I think it's a little bit early since, you know, we're still in the process of implementing the new system.
Great. And then a follow-up on Councilmember Joseph's question about um the rates of enrollment. Among the six portfolio categories that you share, uh can, which, which titles, which civil service titles have the highest numbers of enrollees?
So that's, that's part of the, the issue with our current system.
Okay.
It's a disparate system, so it's very hard to connect um the training data to workforce data. But with the new system, we will be able to connect the dots and, you know, be able to speak more um, you know, clearly about the data and the employees that we serve around training.
Great. What does DCAST do if a course is over-enrolled? And does the agency extend the cap? Or will people who were unable to enroll be forced to wait until the course is offered again?
So that is a great question, and it happens sometimes. Um, so what we do is we, we try to be as flexible as possible. Um, we do work to keep the classes to a men, uh, you know, a, a manageable size, which is about twenty-five participants in each training class. But in the event that, that we do see um interest above what, what we usually um accommodate, if there are enough folks to, to host another training class, then we'll just add another training class to the schedule or, you know, work with the consultant to allow the additional participants to attend the scheduled training. So we try to be as flexible as possible.
Mm-hmm. What patterns or trends has DCAST observed in the course feedback you've received thus far?
Um, so you know, the, the MMR, you know, is, our success rate is very high, um ninety-three percent um for FY twenty-three. Um, but I'll hand it over to Raj to see if you have any, if you have experienced any trends that you want to share.
It's, it's pretty across the board, the satisfaction for training and training services is what we measure, and uh it's a high percentage. Um, the classes are very highly rated and, and um, you know, the comments that we have, as, as Katrina pointed out, we work towards improve the course constantly. It's an ongoing, continuous improvement, sort of process for us with all of them.
Great. It might be early for this question, but just something to bear in mind, and the council would love to have that data when it's available. But do you have a breakdown of racial and gender back, breakdown of participants for the Management Academy or the Learning and, and the Learning Institute?
May I introduce Mark Cox?
Of course. Okay, sure, um, we have to swear you in, but just come in, you can come in and show administer the oath.
Hi, uh, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Mark. Uh, yes, we do uh collect racial and ethnic data for the Leadership and, Leadership Institute and the Management Academy.
Do you happen to have some of those numbers with you today?
Not all of them. I'm sorry, I thought I did, but I'll, I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay, that's fine. You can send it over to, to us and we'll share with the rest of the members. Um, does completing management and training courses increase an employee's chance of being promoted within their agency? Is that something you all have found?
So what I can say is that the trainings the city offer, it's to support uh city employees in their, in their, to, you know, be, be good in their current capacities. Um, but also to prepare them um for future uh opportunities. However, there is no direct correlation between training and promotion.
Okay.
Um, you know, promotion is, is done at the agency level, but I can say that it could potentially increase their uh marketability and readiness for the next step.
Cause there's some skills that are transferable, so they can take some with.
Yes, yes, most of our trainings, they're, most of the trainers we offered uh do provide transferable skills that can be used across, you know, the city. You know, so where, we, what we want to focus on is training uh all city employees to serve well, no matter which agency they may be assigned to.
Great. Has the agency explored rewarding participants of exec, of the executive development and management and supervision trainings by giving them additional points on civil, civil service promotional exams?
That's an interesting concept. Unfortunately, we do not give uh additional points um on exams for management and training. DCAST issued management and training, however, um, we do give additional points for certifications, um but that is determined when we are uh developing the examination.
And the points would go towards your civil service exam?
To their score on the exam, yes.
What would it take to uh expand where uh participants can gain points on civil service? Is that like an agency policy decision or are you preempted by law or?
Well, no, it's a, it's a, a process to, to deter, to determine, to develop an examination, and it starts what we call a job analysis, so it would, it would really start there. I think it's a very interesting concept. I would like to take it back to the team and see if there's a way that we can operationalize that.
Great. Okay. In response to Local Law eighteen of twenty nineteen in May twenty twenty-one, DCAST issued recommendations for the development and implementation of pay, employment, and retention equity plans. DCAST pledged that within the next year, they would continue to work with the Office of Data and Analytics to produce a thorough progression analysis that would allow the city to understand and address the roadblocks to career progression. What is the status of that analysis and can DCAST share any findings with us at this time?
Uh, sure, so um, pay equity cabinet was developed. And so back in June, um, we request, we released a re, uh request, RFQ, to identify a vendor to do this work. I'm excited to announce that we have selected a vendor and we are in the process of finalizing the contract. Um, upon uh the contract being uh, you know, finalized, we will be prepared to provide the council with um a detailed project plan, including milestones and deliverables for the consultant. So things are moving and you know, we should have more information for you soon.
Great, that's good news. Um, my last question is, is DCAST currently experiencing any challenges to the, to administering training courses? If so, what supports would enhance DCAST's ability to provide relevant, helpful courses for city's employees?
Yes, I think we're on the right track. Um, with the, the launch of our new learning and management system, it will definitely help us to expand our course offerings and also build in flexibility for city employees to um, to take training um at their convenience. So I think that will help us to address some of our more paper-intensive processes and reporting requirements. That, you know, you know, our, some of our processes are very paper-intensive, um especially around mandated training, so the, which, you know, can be um a pain point for our process. Um, so we're hopeful that the, the new system will help us with those, those issues.
What doc, what documentation does DCAST require a participant request and accommodation? So we were asking about hearing impaired or any uh person who, who has a disability. What documentation is usually required in order to accommodate?
So no official documentation is required, it's just a request. And then we'll do our best to accommodate that request.
Okay. All right, it seems like you've answered all our questions. We thank you for uh being here today. Uh, we look forward to continuing this discussion in the new year. Happy holidays, and we look forward to working with DCAST to streamline these processes and make sure that employees have access. So thank you for your testimony today.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, we will now turn to public testimony. Uh, we will be limiting to, uh, public testimony today to two minutes each. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. Um, for our first panel, um, please let, please wait for your name to be called and then come up. Um, Matthew Morris, Daniel Morris, Garrett Ramirez, Rachel Maniscallo, Vito Fatchalanga, and Stella Mitchell Porto. Sorry if I pronounced, mispronounced any of your names.
We'll begin with Matthew Morris, and as we go down the line, can you just identify yourself for the record? Matthew, you may begin.
All right, good afternoon. I'm just going to keep it uh short and brief. So about two years ago, I was put on leave without pay and then subsequently terminated. So I've been waiting to get my job back and receive all these uh fine things that have been spoken about here today, so I'm seeking reinstatement. And that's it, I'll just let uh everybody else continue and thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Daniel Morris. Um, I was an EMT at Station fifteen for New York City Fire Department. I was fired at June of last year for non-compliance with the COVID vaccine mandate. Uh, now that that mandate is no longer in effect, I'm seeking reinstatement. That's all I have to say today, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Stella Mitchell Porto. I was the New York City Assistant Principal at District Seventy-Five P twenty-five R Special Education School, consisting of over twenty-two school sites on Staten Island, New York. This would have been my thirtieth year with the New York City Department of Education. I was fired, forced to resign for refusing to take the COVID nineteen vaccine. Even though the vaccine mandate has been lifted, I have still not been able to return to work because I was told that since it did not receive exemption to the vaccination, that I was not in compliance with the City Health Commissioner's order. I told my union principal, superintendent, and chancellor that I did not receive due process. I got no response. I wrote numerous emails about my religious and medical research and that I needed to do about the vaccine, but was never responded to. I used all my savings and my TDA to fight this battle. About two weeks ago, I had to file to retire because I needed to save my house that is in jeopardy of losing. I am getting the runaround about retirement dates and my OP forty-four retirement paperwork is now on hold. Under Executive Order number seventy-five, August second, twenty twenty-one, a memo came out to the administration stating that there was a mandatory vaccine requirement for new hires. Section one of this executive order stated persons newly hired for employment by any agency must provide proof having received at least one dose of an approved COVID nineteen vaccine prior to beginning their employment, except for those who obtained an exceptional due to medical and religious reasons through the responsible accommodation process. I was hired over thirty years ago, and how was I responsible to take the COVID nineteen vax under this order? What my principal asked of me didn't make sense. If I had the choice, I would go back to my position at P twenty-five R. I love my job and working with my special needs students. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My name is Garrett Ramirez.
There you go. Thank you.
My name is Garrett Ramirez. I was an NYC Educational Assistant with Special Needs Students, and I worked with, in public schools for over fifteen years. I was fired for declining the COVID shot. The mandate has been lifted, but I have not received an offer to return nor the back pay to which I am entitled. I was suspended for six months without pay and also restricted by the Department of Labor from getting unemployment. I like to say that the uh, the hiring mandate has been lifted, but not the firing mandate. Everyone terminated stays terminated. Everyone put on the chopping block by this city is still bleeding, presumably as a warning to anyone else who might think about standing up for their rights and their health. I have submitted a folder to you with five peer-reviewed journal articles and five university hospital studies. This is a small sample of the accredited science that undermines the Big Pharma claim that the so-called vaccines are safe and effective. I don't want to hear about the Nobel Prize-winning mRNA shot. In nineteen forty-nine, the Nobel Committee awarded the Prize of Medicine to the inventor of the frontal lobotomy. The BBC reports that the lobotomists were, quote, "often progressive reformers." It was promoted as a cure for everything from serious mental illness to postnatal depression. Meanwhile, psychiatrists in the Soviet Union rejected it as too dehumanizing. It was soon, quote, "discovered to have a fatality rate of fifteen percent." Years later, victims and their families campaigned to have it rescinded, but the Nobel Foundation refused to recognize them. Frankly, I'm not expecting much better from you. Uh, my satisfaction will most likely come through the courts. Uh, but there is going to be pain and suffering uh charges, and the pain and suffering accumulates each day that the injustice goes unaddressed. The sooner you acknowledge and reverse it, the less damage there will ultimately be to the city of New York. I hope that everyone on the council have all gotten their Pfizer checks because God knows they've earned them. Vicky Palladino accepted. The ever-growing influence of Big Pharma has not increased the public health, but reduced it, actually lowering American life expectancy over the past twenty years.
Thank you.
This cannibalistic, cannibalistic industry is who you entrusted our health to.
Your time is up, thank you.
The social contract of this city lies shattered.
Your time is up, sir.
It's a grim warning to the entire country.
Your time is up, sir.
A society this corrupt is doomed to collapse, and the collapse will not spare you.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
We, the people, have invindicated in history, in science, and in the eyes of God, and this chamber is condemned.
Thank you, your time is up. Next, please introduce yourself and please adhere to two minutes. Thank you so much.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Hello, my name is Vito Fatchalanga. I come from a long line of New York City civil servants. My father was a sanitation worker, my mother, and one of my brothers were teachers. Brother two worked for the NYPD, and the third was a captain for the fire department just two blocks away from here. I began my career in nineteen eighty-nine as a paraprofessional working in District Seventy-Five. District Seventy-Five is a special ed program for the most challenged children in New York City schools. Through the years, I moved on from a paraprofessional to being a teacher and finally an assistant principal. I had thirty-one years invested in this system, working a job I believed in and enjoyed. This came to an end after being fired for not taking the experimental medical procedure, otherwise known as a vaccine. As an assistant principal, I took great pride in my leadership role. I saw myself as a role model and someone who stood for what was right. I had staff come to my office crying because they were being forced to take the vaccine against their will. I understand because I felt the same way. When the time came, a difficult choice had to be made. We were professionals being forced to take a vaccine against our will, and if we chose not to do so, our livelihood was taken. Resulted in inability to provide for my family, or provide a shelter or food, that was not right. This sealed my decision to stand up for what I believe was right for me and others like me, especially my colleagues who decided to get the vaccine against their will. The New York State Supreme Court confirmed my decision on January sixteenth, nine, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three, when they ruled the vaccine mandate was unconstitutional. New York City prof, professionals who choose not to be vaccinated deserve to be treated with fairness and respect. We need to be given an opportunity to return to work, just as the athletes and actors were back in twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, sir.
Can I conclude by reciting a quote on the ceiling? "Equal and exact justice to all men of whatever state of persuasion."
Thank you.
Thomas Jefferson.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I think we have one more on the panel. Yep. Please identify yourself and.
Thank you. Before my two minutes begin, I'd like to say that there are registered people um who wanted to speak with uh via Zoom and they haven't received a link. Many, many people.
We will make sure whoever registered with us, thank you.
Wonderful. My name is Rachel Maniscalco. I was a New York City English and Special Education teacher for ten years, and I was fired for declining the COVID shot. Even though the vaccine mandate has been lifted, I have still not been able to return to work because the city has determined that fired workers will not be reinstated, but may reapply for their previous positions, at which time they will sign away their rights to challenge their employment status and potentially be denied their jobs again, this time with no recourse. Should they be rehired, they would start from the bottom at the lowest salary step and without tenure. That is not happening, not after I gave my life to that job for a decade. I was an exemplary teacher, colleague, and employee. I received highly effective observations, led professional development conferences, set the bar for. observations, led professional development conferences, set the bar for parent outreach and student engagement, and barely ever took a day off. At the end of my career, I worked pregnant through the pandemic because I knew my students, especially my special education population, needed in-person learning. My students were always as much a priority to me as my own family, often to the detriment of my family since the job required ample personal time and attention outside of school hours. This might sound like an overabundance of self-praise, but I will not be silent about the dedication I put into a career that was so quick to throw me aside. I was the kind of teacher whom you would want your son or daughter to have, and I was fired without a formal charge, without the due process that is my lawful right because I declined an injection that we have since learned has wreaked havoc on the lives of so many. I will forever stand by my decision to maintain my dignity, my health, my bodily autonomy, and my freedom from unnecessary medical interventions, especially since the data that Pfizer and other manufacturers wanted to hide for 75 years has not been kind to them. Blood clots and strokes, reproductive issues, heart attacks in both the old and the young, unprecedented miscarriages and aggressive cancers, excessive all-cause mortality in the youngest age bracket to date. People are suffering from these shots, and while that is an entirely different conversation and one that will come to light sooner than later, the takeaway from today's is this: No one should be made to choose between his or her livelihood and a potentially deadly DNA-altering experimental injection. All city employees who were fired or forced to resign due to the vaccine mandate deserve an apology. We deserve our jobs back if we want them, and we will never stop demanding to be made whole.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you to this panel. This next panel that we're calling up will be Raquel Ibarola, Victoria Russo, George Garvey, Daniel Holkauer, and Jack W. Lynn.
I want to remind folks that the hearing topic for today is de-cash trainings. We will adhere to the two-minute clock, and if you go over two minutes, you will be ejected from the chamber, given that today's topic is de-cash trainings. So please be respectful. There are a lot of people signed up to speak. If you all speak for two minutes, we will have the time to hear from everyone. Thank you, and you may begin with Raquel. You may begin. Identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Hello. I was a New York City teacher. I was unlawfully fired for declining the COVID injection. Even though the vaccine mandate has been lifted, I have not been able to return to work because the city's mayor has refused to reinstate the unvaccinated employees as by court orders, mandating otherwise. I applied for a religious exception that was denied all the time, and we read in the Bible that God said, "Let us make mankind in our image." Based on my biblical beliefs and the fact that men have been on earth for many generations, I do not need a recent man-made upgrade to my immune system or vaccine to live on this earth. For months, I was not allowed to work. My finances were decimated. I lost my pension. My son had been also fired from his job and could not go to college. He had to quit for not taking the COVID injection. We could not enter cafes or restaurants. I was given a problem code that made me unemployable, and my fingerprints were sent to the FBI. At the state level, infectious disease quarantine camps laws approve for people suspected of having been in contact with contagious disease. We leave the beginnings of a Nazi Germany Holocaust under the guise of a health crisis. To this day, I have never had COVID. My husband works in health. He worked for two years with people with COVID. He never got COVID. As soon as he got the injection, because he got one, he got COVID, and he developed a heart condition, and he saw a lot of people die around him through his practice. I'm going to say that I'm working right now in junkers. I want to go back to the city and recover my job. I am a bilingual teacher. I was also a special education teacher. I worked with pre-k. My kids just turned. Some of my students came to my class this year as three-years-old.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You could go down the line. Just identify yourself.
My name is George Garvey. I was a sanitation worker for over nine years, fired for not taking the vaccine. We, you know, myself and 15 other sanitation workers took our lawsuit to the New York State Supreme Court, and we won. Court ruled the mandate was arbitrary and capricious, therefore unlawful and unconstitutional. Court's order for us was to be reinstated with full back pay, full reinstatement the following day. City filed their intent to appeal, and now we're coming on to over a year now since then, and it's sitting in the appellate court, waiting to be heard. I'm not here to, you know, beg for my job back. Basically, my goal is to get justice, not just for us, but for everyone, you guys included, everyone in this country, because point being is, yeah, there's a, you know, this mandate was ordered and forced months after the CDC stated that it doesn't stop contraction and transmission. So I'm here to implore all of you to use your influence and end this mandate once and for all. Tyranny, you know, tyrants, eventually, you know, when they do achieve their goal of amassing too much power, they eventually do turn on those who aided and abetted them on their rise. So this is much bigger than vaccines and how you feel about vaccines. This is about we, the people, by the people, for the people. And what happened was just wrong, immoral, and unlawful, and I will not rest until I get back everything that was stolen from me.
Thank you so much for being here today.
My name is Daniel Holkauer. I worked for the New York State Department of Sanitation for five and a half years before I was unlawfully terminated for refusing to comply with the COVID-19 vaccine mandate. I just want to remind everybody that every generation has the excuse as to why that group of people needed to be marginalized. Whether it was for one reason or another, we live in a time where we're supposed to be even more mindful than ever as to how we treat other people and the future and the past in this country and learning from our mistakes and not repeating them. And this was a mistake that's been repeated multiple times in history, and every time, we say we've learned from it. But we don't. The next generation has the excuse as to why we have to marginalize another group of people. Why? Well, this time, they refused to vaccinate. They refused to comply. When we reach a point in our country where regular, everyday, middle-class people are forging documents in order to maintain their jobs, in order to go to a restaurant, in order to not be segregated against, it is time for national self-reflection. It is time to ask ourselves, wait a second, are we about to make the same mistake we did 1,000 other times and claimed we learned from? HOCAL wants to make quarantine camps in this state. Quarantine camps in the state of New York, even though the Nuremberg laws are actually encoded in New York state law. How is that going to go over? Tax money being used to fight and put people into camps. What is the difference? The reason the city is fighting our case is because our case is going to be a roadblock to that, and I am glad to be part of that roadblock. But at the end of the day, if you guys just stop fighting me, all I want is what is owed, my due compensation, and I just want to go back to throwing garbage in the rain. I just want to go back to pushing snow. I just want to go back to being stinky and doing my job like I did for five and a half years.
Thank you so much. So we don't clap in the chamber, but we can do this, okay? So you want to agree with someone, you do this. You want to disagree, you do that, okay? Next.
Okay. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Jack Wei-Lin. I'm 39 years old. I was an EMT with the FDNY for over 14 years since 2008. Last year, I got fired for my refusal of the COVID vaccine mandate. Even though the mandate was lifted, I haven't returned to my position because of the unfair de-cash citywide waiver that I'm required to sign to give up my civil service rights and in order to be reconsidered for reinstatement. My religious exemption was denied by the FDNY EO office, and I also lost my citywide vax appeal. Despite having been a Christian since I was a child, despite being baptized at age 12, despite going to a Christian liberal arts college, despite getting my bachelor's degree in religion, despite serving as a missionary abroad, so please believe me when I tell you that my faith is genuine, and it would have been a violation of my personal conscience and beliefs to take the COVID shots. After I came back to the U.S. from the mission field, I applied to work as an EMT with the FDNY. I wanted to be there to help for the next 9/11, and I firmly believe that COVID was EMS's 9/11. EMTs and paramedics were the tip of the spear going into people's homes and taking them to the hospital. I worked in-person 12- to 16-hour days in operations throughout the pandemic. My commute from Queens was close to five hours round trip by public transportation to Staten Island, a COVID hero to a COVID zero. My employment insurance benefits were denied three times. I couldn't even find work until after the private sector mandate was lifted. I never imagined that the violation of religious freedoms could happen here in this great country and in this great city. The city and the FDNY have forgotten my service. They forgot all the people I helped. They forgot the hospital cop in cardiac arrest that I performed CPR on while off duty with a broken wrist. But my God sees everything, and I implore you to do the right thing and to reinstate us. Thank you for listening to my testimony.
Thank you so much. We have one more. Yes.
My name is Victoria Russo. I'm a special education teacher. I worked for the Department of Education for 23 years. I had the privilege to work with children on the autism spectrum. I was first put on leave without pay, and eventually I was fired, terminated, for declining to take the COVID vaccine. I still have not returned to work because I believe that the vaccine mandates are unjust and violated my personal freedom and my medical privacy. I love teaching, and I care deeply about my students. I've dedicated my career to helping them overcome their challenges and reach their full potential. I have not been granted the opportunity to return to my existing position as a special education teacher. I feel that all teachers who were wrongfully fired should be reinstated to our previous position under the stipulation that we will be compensated for our lost wages and compensated for lost time. I've chosen not to get vaccinated for religious, personal, and medical reasons. I respected and respect the right of others to make their own decisions about their health, and I expect the same in return. The vaccine mandates are discriminatory and coercive. They forced me to choose between my livelihood and my health, violated my constitutional rights and my human dignity. They ignored the fact that I had natural immunity from a previous COVID-19 infection and COVID pneumonia. They disregarded the opinions of medical experts who have raised questions about the necessity and legality of these vaccine mandates. We need this court and this council to recognize that we were wrongfully treated by our city, our state, and our union that was supposed to represent us. I pray that this council has the courage to act. We are not the enemy. We are colleagues, your friends, your neighbors. We were essential workers who had served our community with dedication and compassion throughout this pandemic. We deserve to be treated with fairness and dignity. Thank you for listening to my testimony.
Thank you all so much for coming.
Our next panel will be Trinidad Smith, Chaka Fair, Tim Heaton, Michael Kane, and Gabriel Delmau.
We'll start with Trinidad. Hold on. Hold on. We have to do it by order. So when... Okay. You're speaking out of turn. When it is your turn to testify, you can give your remarks. We are Trinidad, Trinidad Smith. It is your turn to speak. Trinidad Smith, are you here?
I'm here.
Okay, please start. Turn on your microphone and start.
Turn it on?
Yeah, it's on. It's on.
My name is Trinidad Smith. I came here at age 6 from an orphanage in Boca Tuck, Columbia. New York City and the DOE has helped me achieve my American dream of buying my first and only home in 2019 at age 49. I am grateful. These mandates and the lack of ability to gain my job back puts me and my son of losing my home. This is it for me. I have exhausted most of my savings. There will be no more house for my son and I. I dedicated my last 20 years to New York City and its special needs population, with my concentration being students with autism spectrum. I have a clean record and service. I even stayed within the same organization during my tenure, an indication of loyalty to my colleagues and my profession. I was terminated and never even offered a fair hearing after requesting my legal right to due process following my request for a religious exemption and was denied. My union failed me. I was also denied unemployment and repeatedly lied, was lied to, sent lies and said that I was terminated or I quit, I wasn't terminated, and that I was also retired. These are things that I have proof of, but yet I'm still suffering as a result of these lies that have been put out. When the city lifted the mandate restrictions for the private sector, I applied for a sets position in the Bronx, a four-hour commute, two buses, and a subway from New Jersey so that I could maintain this mortgage. Unfortunately, this was not as easy. The city had put a P-code on it. P-code indication did not have a differentiation between inappropriate behavior or an objection to a mandate, which this is a character assassination for the professionalism that I put in for 20 years to be put and lumped in the same P-code. Since the February 23, the public...
Thank you so much. Thank you for your testimony.
Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Kane. I was a special education teacher for over 14 years in New York City until I was terminated for declining the COVID vaccination. I've been suing New York City in state and federal court for the past two years over this. In September of this year, I was ordered back to my job by a New York State Supreme Court judge. However, New York City appealed. I didn't get my job back. I come here today not to tell of my hardships so much as the hardships of hundreds, thousands of New York City Department of Education employees. One of the most egregious punishments that my colleague right here just referred to was the brandishing of a problem code, a scarlet letter that was placed on all unvaccinated employees. These problem codes have prevented many from obtaining employment in New York City and outside as well. I actually submitted for the record a court affidavit from an AP who couldn't get a job in Westchester because she got this problem code. Nine members of Congress from New York have written a letter to New York City Schools Chancellor David Banks, asking eight reasonable questions. I also submitted that for the record as well, too. It's almost six months. There's no response from Banks or from Eric Adams or any designee. I also included other documents from my attorney showing that how many people this has affected. I asked the chairs of the committee, please bring this to the attention of Chancellor Banks, of Mayor Adams. They need to respond to Congress. These are very reasonable questions. Recently, Mayor Adams had said, "When you can't work, you are being exploited. We fought hard to get rid of draconian rules. That's why we've been saying to the national leaders, 'Let them work.'" But he wasn't speaking about unvaccinated fired individuals. He was speaking about undocumented immigrants. Now, I support undocumented workers to have the right to work. I actually ran a Dreamers Alliance. Ms. De La Rosa, you actually gave a presentation with one of my students once at a CUNY Dreamers conference. My Dreamers Alliance is gone now because of this. Thank you so much for hearing me out.
Thank you so much for your time. You may identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Chaka Fair. I'm a clinical social worker. I was employed by the Department of Education for 20 years and was terminated. How do I go back to my child who is at Morehouse, and we just purchased a car for him because he's doing the right thing, and tell him to continue to persist and do the right thing when I get fired for no cause, no recourse, or anything? How do I go to my wife and tell her that now she's going to be the sole breadwinner in our home when I did everything right? 20 years. Did I get fired because of time and attendance? Did I get fired because I disregarded a direct order? Did I get fired for, God forbid, touching a child inappropriately? Did I get fired for maybe having inappropriate contact with another staff member? No. I was fired because I practiced my religious freedom and decided not to take the COVID shot. I was fired. There was no recourse, no reason or anything. This is a modern-day Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego story, where we are asked to bow before a false god, and if that doesn't happen, then we've been thrown in the fiery furnace. Now, you may not have thrown us... Now, you may not have thrown us in the fiery furnace, but you certainly have the opportunity to decide how long we stay there. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. You may go ahead, sir.
My name is Tim Heaton. I was lieutenant with the fire department. I was placed on leave without pay two years ago, November 1st of 2021, and subsequently terminated July 6th of 22, 33 days shy of what should have been my 23rd year anniversary with the FDNY. I've applied for reinstatement. The department has denied my application pending the signing of a waiver that states I will not hold anyone liable for lost pay or time and will not seek to reclaim lost wages. It's four pages of gobbledygook lawyer speak. I've watched enough lawyer shows to know that I would never sign such a broadly worded statement, especially one that would directly impact my career and my life. This was sent to me when I filed for reinstatement, and my reply to the geniuses at FDNY Legal was, "I have been fighting for my rights for a year and a half. Why would I waive them at this time?" That was six months ago. Since then, despite numerous meetings and promises made to Councilwoman Ariola, despite several members being allowed back to work without having to sign the waiver, I still haven't been allowed to return to work. It's almost a year since the waiver mandate was waived and we were supposed to be able to return to work. The general public believes we've all been back to work, as I just said at a reunion with my old firehouse, and more than a few of my former coworkers thought I had been allowed to return to work. That's what the mayor and the media said. Unfortunately, it isn't true. At the current rate, with the obstructionist and legal department and de-casts, which this hearing is an oversight of, it doesn't look like it will happen anytime soon without help from city council or the justice system. The city and FDNY continue to claim they did nothing wrong. If that is the case, then why do they need me to sign a waiver for reinstatement? The city agencies, to be shorthanded in my spot along with these other witnesses, are being covered on overtime. There's already tons of overtime as I continue to get notifications on an almost daily basis. The city continues to waste money fighting our applications to return and appealing court ordered return to work decisions. They even hired an outside law firm to fight Article 78 cases. They keep losing in front of judges. They could simply return us all to work, even give us back pay and time, and it would be cheaper than what they are currently doing.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. I want to recognize we've been joined by Councilwoman Menon as well. You may go ahead.
Hello?
Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Gabriel Dalmau. I was a metal worker for the Department of Sanitation. I was terminated from my job for declining the COVID shot. Even though the mandate has been lifted, I'm still not back at work, and I simply do not understand what is going on in this city. When COVID happened, we were all scared. People got sick and were dying, my mother being one of those tragic stories. All alone in the hospital, we couldn't even hold her hand in her final moments. But I still managed to get to work. You probably have no idea what that feels like, or maybe you don't care, but I do, and it still hurts to this day. Like many of us, I was banging on pots and pans for the nurses and the first responders out there risking their necks. I went to work every day, not knowing what I might be bringing home, but I still went and answered the call. No vaccine, no problem. No solution, no problem. We all still went to work while most people were at home doing Zoom calls in their pajamas. Then the mandates happened, and I applied for a religious exemption, same as my work partner, but I was denied, and he was approved. He's been working the whole time, and I'm happy for him. That's the right thing. But what about the rest of us? How is this not discrimination? In the middle of a pandemic, the city decided to go ahead and fire the same people who helped you get through the worst of it, taking away not only our ability to work and feed our families, but also taking away our health insurance, which really made no sense at all. How is it possible the city officials and our unions could turn their backs on us? The very same people who were praised and being called essential and heroes and all that good stuff. What happened to due process? Where are the rallies by city officials to get us back to work? Shame on you. Mandates have been lifted, court cases have been won, but appealed by the city, and here we are still. What the heck is going on? Take a moment to put yourselves in our shoes and see how you would feel. How would you respond? A lot of folks were forced out of their jobs and even had to move. That's the thanks that we get. It is very curious to me that with all the talk of mental health, we don't seem to matter. With all the talk of discrimination not being tolerated, we don't seem to make the cut. I wonder why that is. I guess I'll just have to ask my therapist during our next session and keep praying to God for true justice. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Our next panel will be Orlene Borno, Roxanne Valdez, Aura Moody, Sophia Harrington, and Audrey Dennis. If you have not yet filled out a slip to speak today, you can do so at the back.
All right, we'll start with Orlene. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Okay, we'll start with you, and we'll go down the line. Thank you.
Good afternoon, elected body of the city council. My name is Orlene Borno, a 26-year-old bilingual teacher, a high school teacher who was consistently rated highly effective, and unfortunately was fired involuntarily for declining to take the COVID vaccine, 19 vaccine. Even though the vaccine mandate has been lifted, I'm still not able to return to work with the New York City Department of Education because no direct pathway to return to my previous school and title has been created by the New York City Department of Education. Although I have repeatedly sent out countless emails, certified mails, phone calls to the Board of Education to personnel such as Catherine Rhodey, the Executive Director of Office of Employee Relations, and Liz Vladick, the General Counsel of the New York City Department of Education, with no avail. So once again, no clear pathway has been set up for my reinstatement, any other teachers in my situation as well as I have known. I contacted the UFT General Counsel Beth Norton. She wrote back to me and countless teachers in my position, tenured teachers like myself, and her quote says, "The UFT agrees with you. You are entitled to a 30-20 process." Together with the MLC, we filed a lawsuit to protect the right, but the judge dismissed the case. The judge agreed with the DOE that they had unilateral right to terminate in this circumstance. We have filed an appeal. In the interim, should you wish to return to work, you will need to reapply and be rehired. You are not entitled to reinstatement, back pay, or accumulated benefits." End of quote. I reached out to my former principal in Queens, great school in Queens, great kids, and letting her know my situation and how I reached out to my union rep. And she said unfortunately that the Department of Education did not provide any pathway or protocols for her to start the reinstatement process. So unfortunately, this is reoccurring issue. My only takeaway message is, thanks again.
Thank you.
I need you all to look into the pathways. We need pathways to go back to work. Our unions let us down. City officials let us down, so we need a clear pathway to return to work.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming.
Hello, my name is Sophia Harrington. I was a New York public schools teacher in the Bronx for six years before I was put on leave without pay and then terminated for noncompliance with the COVID vaccine due to my religious beliefs. I was at the same school for all six of my years in service, working in person through the pandemic without proper PPE. Though the vaccine mandate has been lifted, I am still unable to return to work without the humiliation of reapplying to a job I already held with tenure or without the conditions that limit my right to free speech. For an entire calendar year, I was rendered necessarily jobless by the Department of Education in the city of New York, according to a deal that the UFT and the city made. If I was to keep my health insurance, I could not apply to or actively work at any other jobs without losing my position. In my particular case, my health insurance was paramount because I have a chronic health condition. For 365 days, I struggled to maintain rent and feed myself as inflation steadily climbed, just to be told in September of 2022 that I was to be let go. When I was finally released to apply to other jobs, I discovered that my record had been flagged simply because I had exercised my constitutional rights. To this day, I am still clawing my way back to financial stability, and I was one of the lucky ones. Many of my colleagues had to large families, health crises, and mortgages. Many were forced out of the city and state, again simply because they chose to exercise their protected civil liberties. On top of affecting me personally, my forced resignation has deeply impacted my former students and the students of the thousands of colleagues who were also fired or otherwise forced to resign. For a year after I was removed from my position, my school did not replace me, and there was no ENL teacher in the building. This is a school where about a third of the students are English language learners, and many more than that require informal language assistance. There was no one to help newcomers access curriculum or to help translate for parents. Six years' worth of support networks I had worked hard to build with students and their families were gone. To this day, I do not know if my position has been filled. Exploitation is not a new concept to teachers in this public school system. Our kindness, the way we care about our students, and our unwavering dedication to their growth is often exploited in the form of long hours. I just want to finish with this. I'm here to remind you that we are here. We are real humans whose lives the city has devastated. We will not conveniently disappear, and we will continue to hold you responsible.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming.
Good afternoon.
Can you press the button? Press the button, the red. There you go. Yes.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Aura Moody. I worked as a school social worker for over 20 years. I consider myself an employee because I was unlawfully placed only with how pay while awaiting a decision on my application for a religious exemption under the grounds of natural immunity. And I was allegedly terminated without being served with a final notice or leave with how pay and without being charged and served with a termination notice because the DOE blocked my email account in October of 2021 while I was still on unlawfully placed leave with how pay. I am very disappointed with the city of New York because Mayor de Blasio announced a bus or test policy on July 26, 2021. And while MLC and its constituents' unions were negotiating the bus or test policy, Mayor de Blasio overstepped them and imposed a COVID vaccine mandate for DOE employees under an unconstitutional health order issued by Health Commissioner on August 24, 2021. That health order is unconstitutional because it made no provisions for exemptions or accommodations for people who have religious beliefs or medical concerns. And also, it had no due process rights measures. So the UFT award was issued by an arbitrator who used to forraise for Mayor de Blasio, and he imposed a COVID vaccine mandate. I submit an affidavit in support of my claims.
Please wrap up. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Can you pass her the microphone? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Roxanne Valdez. I was New York City DOE teacher fired on February 2022 for declining the COVID-19 shot. Even though the vaccine mandate has been lifted, I have still not been able to return to work. I have been an employee at the New York City Department of Education for 15 years. I'm so proud to be the first in my family to graduate college. It is with deepest gratitude and love that I dedicate my diploma to my husband and my kids. My husband has been my rock, my confident, and my biggest support. And that's why I decided to come over here and fight for my rights. My career started in District 75 as a paraprofessional in 2007, then as a classroom teacher for Grade 106 in September 2018. I was a full-time student to become a teacher, sleepless night of schoolwork and take multiple college loans so I can devote myself for helping kids in need. But everything went downhill because I wouldn't let the government tell me what to do with my body and my health. On September 24, 2021, my religions extension application to the DOE vaccine mandate was denied. And I reapply, and I was denied again on September 28, 2021. The reason why I applied twice was because I did not receive an appeal option. I don't have a job yet because I don't feel the need to look for a new one since I didn't do anything wrong to lose my job in the first place. I came to this country in 1993 from Ecuador, and I can't believe in the United States of America I have to choose between my faith and my job. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Audrey Dennis, and I was a New York City Department of Education School Secretary prior to October 4, 2021, under former Mayor Bill de Blasio and continuing under the same leadership style of mayoral-controlled governance without any direct communication. On February 11, 22, Eric Adams, who is now the current mayor of the city, unconstitutionally and wrongfully terminated me from my job of almost 30 years for refusing to be coerced into taking the COVID vaccine, which the mayor had lifted on February 6, 23. Since being terminated, I have not been called back to work, nor have I found a job with steady income. Why is this so? It was disclosed to me that a problem code that is normally assigned to a DOE's record for alleged concerns with conduct that may pose a threat to children or affecting job performance. The union working with the DOEs would still have the staff member on payroll until the case is decided. But in my case, I had done nothing wrong, yet I was not given any due process for refusing this vaccine and instead asking for an exception through my religious belief, which was quickly denied by folks who were not religious at all. This code, which was placed in my record with the FBI, prevented anyone from hiring me. Also, all this time, attorneys arguing cases for terminated city workers faced an appeal thereafter by the legal team from the city using our tax dollars to fight a case that should not have been before the courts in the first place. What has happened to me all these years, these wasted years? According to L I J Hospital, I have lost my mother due to COVID, not getting to be at the hospital with my mother during her time of need. Death of my sister, who worked with the New York City Department of Police Department. She was in the hospital, the same hospital, and no prior health issues with COVID. But taking the Pfizer vaccine, she suffered damages to her vital organs and died this July. My husband was also forced to retire from his job, and I just want to finish with my husband and my son, too, who work with the teachers. All my family work with the city. And I now, as secretary, for all these years in an educational institution where we are teaching children to be critical thinkers.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, just I want to say, we must use our common sense, think for ourselves. Otherwise, we're going to end up like people who went to Guyana with this preacher and gave them Kool-Aid with poison. So we must use our brains.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you all of you for coming.
And I would like to mention that we have been allegedly terminated without due process.
You already testified. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I also have my documents submitted.
You can give it to the...
I submit a 328 request for a hearing, and as of today, the jury has...
Ma'am, it's two minutes, ma'am, and you are done. Thank you. Have a good day. All right, so if you do not adhere, we will end the hearing for those who are off topic. You decide.
We will now be turning to Zoom panelists. We will have Lauren Raiolo, followed by Diane Baker-Paxus. If anyone else is present on Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the Zoom raise hand function. Lauren, please proceed when the sergeant announces that you may begin.
Starting time.
Lauren Raiolo, you may begin.
We see you. Try speaking. We hear you. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Lauren, can you hear us? Lauren, can you hear us? We see you.
I can hear you.
Okay.
Can you...
We hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, amazing. Hi, everyone. Good afternoon.
All right.
My name is Lauren. Can you hear me?
We hear you. We hear you.
Okay. My name is Lauren Raiolo. I worked as a special education teacher for the New York City Department of Education for 12 years. I sub-taught for three years, earned two degrees, passed four exams, went to college, then graduate school for seven years. I worked hard, not only in school, while working two jobs, but for my school, ultimately left with a $30,000 school loan that's good for nothing, a loan I can no longer afford to pay. At the time... Excuse me.
We want you to be safe, Lauren. Are you able to testify? You're driving.
Yes, yes. No, I'm parked. At the time of being fired, February of '22, I was not going to take an experimental vaccine and be the testimony all to find out the potential loss of a pregnancy, which I was pregnant at the time. My own doctor was against me taking the vaccine. My religious beliefs and my personal beliefs are a part of my faith. It is my body and my choice not to take a drug where we were all considered guinea pigs. What type of a mother would I then be if I did not stand up for what I believed in? What type of role model would I be if it did not show my daughters what I believed in? I'm going to teach my children to adhere to tyranny. I will stand up and stand for all religious and medical freedoms for all people, especially all those who are put on the front. all those who are put on the front lines, like myself and the rest of the teachers, the police, the firefighters, EMT, sanitation workers, who were once heroes, teaching your children, helping those in need, all to be treated as the outcasts of society where all of our livelihoods have been ripped from us. Today, I'm seeking restitution. I want my career back, my paycheck, my years of service, all of it. I deserve it. It is my life and my choice. I have exhausted my pension funds to continue to live, and I've had enough. Please give us a job stack and let us work. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
We will now turn to Diane Baker-Pachus.
Starting time.
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes.
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. My name is Diane Baker-Pachus. I'm a New York City Department of Education teacher who was terminated last year. I was fired for declining the COVID shot, even though the vaccine mandate has been lifted. I still have not been able to work because of Department of Education. The United Federation of Teachers and New York City officials have chosen not, not to right the wrong of terminating NYC employees by reinstating us to our positions at the tier from which we were terminated and providing back pay despite the COVID mandate being lifted since February 2023. In the summer of 202021, Michael Mulgrew, who is the, from the UFT, held a town hall meeting stating that teachers would not be required to take the COVID shot because, paraphrasing what he said, "People should not have to choose between their livelihoods and taking a shot." We were however required to take the week test, to which I complied. September 2021, I excitedly entered my school, PSIS 180, as the new, as a new movement and mindfulness instructor, a position that was created for me due to my 15-plus years of experience as an educator and having incorporated mindfulness and movement in my school over the years, a trust I established and nurtured with staff, students, and administration, and to provide the social emotional support that our students needed since being remote for one year and the trauma of the pandemic as a whole. In September of 2021, NYC DOE employees were informed that we were required to take the shot and were sent an arbitration agreement. We were able to submit religious and medical exemptions requests. I submitted a religious exemption, which was denied in less than 24 hours with a generic explanation. I was subsequently put on leave without pay. Based on arbitration agreement while on LWAP, I was not allowed to seek any other form of employment. Due to this, me and my husband's debt significantly increased using credit cards as we turned into, into a one-income household. We then had to move out of our apartment, started living with my mother, October of 2022. These events caused emotional distress such as bursts of anger, crying, spells, sleepless nights, and difficulty engaging with family and friends. I have attempted to get a full-time position but have not, have only been able to get contract slash gig positions. The financial burden continues to be on my husband and the stress of the situation continues to be on both of us and has now transferred to my elderly mother as she is, has been our primary form of refuge. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else on Zoom who wishes to speak who had their hand raised earlier? If so, please unmute yourself and identify yourself before speaking.
Hello? May I speak?
Yes, we hear you. Go ahead.
Yes, my name is Kathleen Comack. I was a New York City mathematics junior high teacher from 1987 to 2021. I dedicated myself to 34 years in the same school and gave my all to my students. I worked summer school, July and August of 2021. I worked September, and in the beginning of October, I have a heart condition, I'm under doctor's care at St. Francis Hospital, one of the top heart hospitals in the country. And my doctor strongly felt that I could not get the vaccine. I have a loop recorder in my chest as we speak. I had not one, but two hearings. I was optimistic, but I was denied. I was placed on leave without pay, and I was forced to retire as a single mother of four with a handicapped child living on the North Shore of Long Island. It has been devastating emotionally, physically, financially. I feel like a leper. I never in a, in a million years ever imagined that I would be fired and kicked to the curb like a piece of garbage. I love my job. Out of 110 teachers, I was the second most senior in the school. I was the number one most senior teacher in the math department. I was considered highly effective. I never had any problems, and I missed my job terribly. I never received a fair hearing, due process, and I was wrongfully terminated, and I want my job back. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
I believe we have one more person on Zoom who has their hand raised. Please identify yourself before starting your testimony. Thank you.
No, that's okay. I'm trying to do a Zoom hearing. I'm just having, it's okay, that's it. Hi, my name is Ms. Jean, and I was a school teacher in the New York City Department of Education for over 17 years. I held the highest seniority in my school for special ed, and I was fired over the vaccine mandate when I tried to get a religious exemption. I was denied without explanation. I appealed it and was denied again without explanation. I was placed on leave without pay. I was not given due rights process for a 30-28 hearing. I was harassed by my principals, asking when I was going to return to the school. I was harassed by my assistant principal on phone calls via emails if I was coming back. I was forced to resign on October 18th, when I was at the peak of my earning career. I was making top salary. I have a master's degree plus 30, and I was let go for no reason, with no explanation, no due rights process. I worked for 17 years in that school, and like all the other teachers, we worked hard. This was not something that I expected to happen to me. It has caused financial hardship to me and my family, emotional stress. It has caused so many problems that I am unable to find work. I had a problem code on my name, and I was denied work twice. I couldn't find a job because of the problem code until it was lifted, which took over four months of communications back and forth with the different agencies to try to get the code released. There was no help from the UFT. There was no guidance from the UFT. There was no information from the UFT on what the fallout could be if we decided to not take the vaccine. And I just wanted it to be heard, and I wanted to speak to the fact that, again, I had 17 years of experience and now I am starting over. I can't find a job in the DOE. Nobody wants to hire me because I am going to be too expensive. I have not heard back in the, from the DOE about getting my job back. No one has answered me. And like all the other teachers, we are still struggling and trying to pick up the pieces and the fallout from what has happened.
Thank you. Thank you for testifying. Thank you for coming today.
If anyone else on Zoom is present who wishes to speak, please use the Raise Hand function to let our staff know. And if there's anyone else in the chamber who wishes to speak who has not had the opportunity to do so yet, please raise your hand. I'm also going to call the five people who have registered, but who we did not see today. Billy Cosis, Joanne Giammarino, Daniel Cronemeyer, Christopher J. Gary, and Sarah Bizalgo. Okay, we will, we'll try to remedy that with our folks. Thank you. I would also like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov.
Just give us a few minutes. We're trying to figure out the Zoom link. Kathleen, your camera's still on.
At this point, if Mr. Christopher J. Gary is available to speak for the record, then he can do so. If not, then we would like to reiterate that he can submit testimony for the record by sending it to the testimony inbox. That is at testimony@council.nyc.gov. If Mr. Gary is unable to, to testify at this point, then we will be adjourning the hearing.
Mr. Gary, are you on? All right. Mr. Gary, we will accept your testimony for 72 hours post the hearing. We want to thank everyone for coming out, wish everyone a happy holidays. This hearing is adjourned.